They didn't test that today. Of course, they don't know.
Alex, can you do roll call for us, please?
Brits?
Here.
Vanessa?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Libby?
Here.
Tanya?
Here.
We do have a quorum. And next, we need to get an approval of the meeting agenda. There's no changes. Except Patrick's not gonna be here.
Patrick's gonna postpone his.
Okay, so I can just approve it then? I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda for tonight.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to approve the minutes from April first.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April first, two thousand twenty-four.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. New business. We have the reading and the signing of the proclamation for Tree City USA Arbor Day on Friday, April twenty-sixth. Can you guys hear me? Thanks to Heath, we're a tree city again. And so the proclamation is, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water. Cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, and cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Tanya Davis, Fortville Town Council President, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, as Arbor Day in the town of Fortville. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our out trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this future generations. Dated this fifteenth day of April, two thousand twenty-four. And I don't remember how many trees we'll have, but.
Well, I don't remember how many. It's, we've got it posted on our website.
Okay.
Facebook, it's out there.
And they can pick those up on that Friday, correct?
Yep. He's the command center.
Okay. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda, council to consider an exception to the domestic animal ordinance to allow an intended accumulation of bees at seven thirteen Breakers Lane. And the request is by Jennifer Powell. Jennifer? Come on up.
Good evening.
Hello.
Evening.
I think at this point in history, everybody knows the importance of pollinators. And I would like to house bees in my backyard as an effort to, as a conservation effort for pollinators in the Fortville area. So I've always wanted to do it. My fourteen-year-old son asked me if we could. He's fourteen, he's only gonna be here for another four years. And so I thought, not only is it a good thing for the planet, it's a good thing for family activity. So I have sent the certified letter to all my neighbors. I've also gone and talked to all my neighbors about it, and everybody seems to be pretty excited about it. Um, I talked to the lawn care people that are driving past the property, and everybody seems excited about the possibility of bees in the yard, so.
Yeah, it sounds like, sounds like everybody's.
It was accepted by the HOA, correct?
Yeah, that's the main thing. Yeah. Obviously, if they're okay with it, everybody else should be, I guess. And I don't see, you know, honey, honeybees generally are not vicious to you anyway, unless.
They're right. They typically mine their, mine their own beeswax.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been doing lots of research to take good care of them. I have a mentor beekeeper. Actually, I have two mentor beekeepers that I work with to, to learn the best practices so that I can take the best care of them, so that they are thriving.
We certainly made the effort, that's for sure, to figure, figure out everything, doing everything right. That's good.
Was, was there any, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know. After you. Sorry.
I was just gonna say, would you be willing to host like a, like a, um, some kind of educational talk about best practices or what you learned out of it, like down the road?
I would be thrilled to do that. Yes.
Not that I'm, I'm not suggesting that's a stipulation or anything, just that, that would be, that would be another nice byproduct of it, if you could.
I would be happy to do that. Yes, thank you for asking.
I was just gonna say, was there any negative feedback from anyone?
I had a little bit of a worry from my next-door neighbor, but she is not medically allergic to bees. So I, um, you know, she doesn't come outside much, and there's a fence that separates us, so I'm not terribly concerned about it.
Would you consider, um, on that note, would you consider having like an EpiPen and place it somewhere that would be like readily accessible and let your neighbors know that kind of thing? Is that, is that what the mentors go over and stuff? I went to a beekeeping course once.
I, I haven't heard anyone mention that I should supply an EpiPen, but that if the folks um, have been deemed medically allergic to bees, that they will already have an EpiPen?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that, I think the legislation is that if she were to contest it, she would actually have to have a note from a licensed physician that says that she is, and she has not come forth with that, so. But yes, I would be happy to talk with her about that if it's a concern.
Yeah, just, um, just because you mentioned, if, if there are some people around who are concerned about it, it's like over, over and above. I took that course in a different state where they're more careful about things.
Yeah.
Than, than Indiana. But it was an interesting idea that if you just have one accessible, just in case. You know, I think the, the, the scenario was if some neighbor kid gets stung and they didn't know they were allergic. For example, like that kind of thing, it would just be a nice extra, um, safety net to have if you had that, but that's just an extra, an idea that I heard about in a course once.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You may.
I would like to have two hives.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, there's usually a stack of boxes and. Yes, ma'am.
Well, they'll actually be close by.
They will.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just north, uh, like straight north from the community garden. Like less than a half a mile.
Probably I'll get everything else. I mean, but how do you think so?
Anybody else got any questions for her? Good sir. Okay, we're looking for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to allow the exception to the domestic animals ordinance to allow the acclamation or accumulation of bees at seven thirteen Breakers Lane.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Next, uh, next up, we have the review for the tax abatement compliance.
All right, good evening. Uh, for the record, I'm Adam Zachlikowski, the planning billing director for the town. Um, so every year, um, according to the state of Indiana, um, there is a document that companies, property owners that are receiving a tax abatement um, need to complete, and it needs to be, uh, reviewed and authorized by the legislative body um, for, for this year, and it would be for the taxes that are due, uh, it'd be twenty twenty-four, pay twenty twenty-five in this case. So in Fortville, we have, um, three active tax abatements. Um, I should say, three, three projects that have, um, active tax abatements. The first one is Taxman. And so, um, they are in, I believe, year seven of their ten-year abatement. And, uh, for that one, the, I know there's a lot of documents that are put into the package mainly for background information, but, um, just so you all have an understanding of it. The, originally back in twenty, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, when they proposed the project, they were planning on having thirty employees with total salaries of six hundred thousand. And they have less employees, um, they have sixteen employees. However, the salaries, um, are seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand and change. So, um, at least in terms of the salaries, they, they greatly exceed that, and it's, um, almost identical to what was filed in previous years for that. So that's for Taxman. Um, the second one for Thursday pools is they've received three tax abatements over the years, um, one dating back to twenty fourteen. There's one dating to twenty eighteen, and then there's another one for twenty twenty-two. And so they're receiving an abatement both on their real estate taxes and on the personal property, which again is allowable under, um, Indiana law. And then the third one and final one is for Debo Cook Properties. This is for that new shell building, metal shell building that is, um, on Ninety-sixth Street or a thousand north. It's under construction right now. It's the one that'll contain Caliber Collision. Uh, there's another contractor that will be going in there. Their tax abatement probably hasn't gone into effect yet because it probably hasn't been, um, fully assessed since it's, it's not finished yet. But, um, just to act on the safe side, they wanted to, want to go ahead and get this processed and, and approved if possible. So, um, I know that, um, Councilwoman Metagolit says she, uh, might have wanted some more time to synthesize this information, so that's totally understandable. Um, there's not a great rush to get this done. In reading the, we typically do this in April of a given year, and they're supposed to file with the county uh, auditor's office by May fifteenth. And if you read the fine print, it says that the legislative body has forty-five days after receiving it to take action on it one way or the other. So in theory, it, it would appear that you could probably go into almost early July if need be, but, um, so certainly not, don't feel like you're being rushed at all. If you needed more information, that's great. We can always get people, um, on the line to address any questions you might have, but that's basically it in a nutshell. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address those. Thank you.
So Adam, just to clarify, as we're kind of looking through these, these tax abatements get reapproved every year? Is that right?
Yes. Um, I don't know if reapproved is the right term, more, um, um, you're authorizing the abatement to continue, that they're in compliance with what they said they were going to do on the original, um, SB one form that they filled out years ago. So, um, lastly, with each of the abatement schedules, um, as is typical and based on state law, the, um, amount of the abatement is reduced by ten percent every one of the years as we keep going down the line to year ten. So at the, at the very beginning, it's like a hundred percent tax abatement, then it'll work its way to ninety, eighty, seventy, and so forth. And so, um, so the abatement becomes less and less as time goes on. And then, um, really, your role as counsel, um, and Alex can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, if you saw a discrepancy in their numbers, let's say that frankly, they're not producing enough jobs that they said they were gonna produce, or they're not producing enough salaries that they said they were gonna produce, then, um, you have the ability to basically terminate the abatement, to stop it, uh, midway and to say they're not in compliance. And that's happened, um, I think, um, at least one other case in the past. In another case, with the, these are different companies that their abatements are finished. Um, there was another case where, you know, they lost a big client. Um, and so the amount of business that they were planning on doing was gratefully reduced, and they kind of pled their case to council at that time. But, um, really, it's just a mechanism that Indiana law wants to make sure that there's some checks and balances, and to make sure that they are, um, accountable to what they uh, promised in order to get the abatement in the first place. So it's, it's just monitoring to make sure they're on track.
So taking the Taxman as an example, there's a description of property improvements, which sounds like that was already done. That's, that's a sort of in the past, and they did that. And, and what you're saying is that in exchange for doing certain improvements and employing a certain number of people or, or what have you, they get a tax abatement for ten years. They've done the property improvement, but you mentioned earlier, maybe a different number of employees, fewer employees.
That's a hundred percent correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and it would be, um, it would be up to you all to make that decision on, um, you know, the, the fact that they have less employees, but the salaries are higher, if that'll be sufficient. I can just say from years past, that had been sufficient enough. But, um, but certainly, um, what you're asked to, um, certify is that they're in substantial compliance, so I will leave that up to, to you all on what your, uh, decisions are on that, but.
And, and so originally, it was supposed to be thirty, but actually it's sixteen, like just, just to review this one.
Correct.
Quite a bit different.
COVID had a lot to do with that, too. That's why the salaries went up and the people went down, so.
I think too, we gave a little credit because of the road construction on Main Street.
Yeah.
And in the past.
Salaries are good, though. That's the main thing.
Does, uh, did Randy Sherrill look over the paperwork on this, or does he?
No. Okay. In the past, um, I know, um, Skip Coker, um, when he was alive, he, he would, uh, review this and present it to council. And Randy has had some loose involvement in it over the years, but I think in this particular case, I don't, he, he would, he would probably tell you the same thing that I'm telling you, so.
And, and with the Debo, with the Debo Cook one, you mentioned that that one hasn't been assessed yet because they're not in building yet? So is that one where we would be doing, approving a tax abatement before it's assessed?
Well, what would happen is, um, the, the auditor's office will be the actual agency at the county that, um, will determine when the, when year one of the abatement starts. And so there's also fine print in the, um, development agreement that goes along with these that says that the abatement doesn't start until it's fully assessed, and then you'll, and then it'll begin. So, um, you know, because as you, as you all know, property taxes are paid in arrears, and so depending on when the construction is finished, that can, um, that can determine when it will start. That's it for me, unless there are any other questions, huh?
There's some questions? Sixteen jobs versus thirty, hundred and forty jobs versus twelve?
More. Hundred and forty. Which one's that one?
That would be, um, that's Thursday pools, hundred and forty versus twelve. Interesting, quite a bit different.
Well, it's because I've grown a lot.
I should stay so. Okay.
Yeah, they're doing.
I don't think they estimate that.
Yeah.
Business.
I know.
Yeah, he's.
Do, do you want more time, Vanessa, as far as what you're saying in the email?
I don't know. It, it seems like, like, so for example, so having sixteen jobs instead of thirty, it sounds like COVID and also road construction, and so that's the prevailing ideas about that. All right.
I think they're, you know, with their salaries, they're.
The salaries, I think, the key there, that if the salaries were down, the people were down, it might look a little bit different than that, but.
They don't have to meet it a hundred percent.
Right, right.
And their estimate, right, they were estimating.
They're giving a range, really.
Yeah, the overall idea being that we give a tax abatement because they are adding value to the town. They're doing good things.
Yeah, exactly.
And, um, we're happy with it. Okay. Okay, I, I'm not quite sure about the one that, that hasn't been assessed yet, but if Adam's saying there's an agreement that it starts after it gets assessed.
It won't be done until this year, that first building, so they'll assess it possibly this year, and it'll be on the tax release next year. Possibly, if they finish it this year, but it will.
It's just, there's a lot of stuff blank on this form for Debo. There's.
There's nothing there. That's why I said, it's just based on structure that was coming, and they didn't know what they're gonna put in it, because eventually, at first, it was just a shell, but they actually have it ten, uh, ready to go in, so. The others, the other building hasn't even started. That's why they give these estimation of time on here, too. Like when it starts construction, possibly when it finishes.
I see, yeah.
All right, okay. If you're good, we'll, we'll make a vote. Need a motion.
We do these also.
Okay. That was my question. Is it all separate, or is it?
You, you can make a motion to approve all three, and if it passes, we're done. If it doesn't, then we can go one by one.
I make a motion to approve all three tax abatements.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, we got it done. Okay, we have no old business. And next is Joe.
Okay, I will be briefed this evening. I'd say that, um, FAI is here in the audience, so I want to, uh, thank them for their work they did getting the grant for the, uh, signs for the parking lot, making the public parking, man on the fence, yeah, kind of nazzed it up a little bit, so good job, and thank you very much. Um, I did go to the water conference or the A W W A conference last week, and of course, I'm hearing more of the same stuff as far as, uh, you know, the EPA is pushing this lead and copper as far as service lines for, um, homes. It's not just Fortville, it's all over the place. So we've already, uh, been working with Commonwealth, as you guys know, you approved that, and we've had our, um, inventory done, submitted. Um, we also applied for a ten thousand dollar grant and was fortunate enough to receive that to help uh, come up with a plan of attack and how we're gonna, you know, move forward. Uh, we still need to do a little more inventory work as far as finding out what the material of the pipe is between the meter pit and the home. Because as of right now, they're requiring us to replace all the way into the houses, even if it's on a concrete slab. So it's, uh, it's not gonna be pretty. Um, fortunately, the only ones that we have to worry about are the, uh, the galvanized pipe. Most of our homes that have been put in in the last twenty, thirty years have been put in with poly tubing or PEX and stuff, so they're, uh, they're in pretty good shape, so. But it's probably the old town more than, uh, more than anything. It's got some of the old galvanized piping. So we'll probably be, uh, sending out surveys and asking their residents to, uh, either fill out the survey, send us pictures of the pipe as it comes into their house, or allow our guests to go in and do a survey. So there's, uh, a lot of, a lot of work ahead of us that, uh, we weren't in originally anticipating, so just to kind of give you a clue what's coming out. And then the PFOS, we'll talk about that later. That's another, that's another big one that they're wanting us to, uh, evaluate. And Alex, I think, has, uh, uh, talked to council before about, uh, what was it, a class action?
Yeah.
For the PFOS that we, uh, we elected to stand down on that one for now to see what happens. Uh, Dave has checked our water for PFOS, very, very low. It's, you know, it's minimal. The PFOS is in pretty much everything. It's in plastic. I mean, it is a certain kind of plastic, so, you know, your dental floss, toothpaste, everything, you've got it in your body, it's everywhere. But, uh, they're looking to get it down to zero in the water system, so that's something that, uh, we will be looking at along with every other community, so. Up and coming.
Last step, Colson.
It is. And with that being said, also, just as a reminder, next week, um, I'll be out in two days, and I'm sorry, I don't have those days around on me, but I'll be out at the, uh, Indiana Municipal Managers Association Conference in Yorktown, so. That's all I've got, unless you've got something for me.
Greg, I think, Joe?
He's not here. Patrick is sick. I mean, he's not here. Alex, you got anything for us?
I don't. Unless you have questions for me.
Oh, Adam, do you have something?
Nothing.
I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions, anything. That's okay.
You spoke, so I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's good as well.
Sorry, I didn't mean to skip you. Public comment. Anybody got something? Yep. Come on up. Mr. Stewart.
Bob Stewart, Fortville Action. Just wanted to let you know that on May tenth, the, uh, Community Foundation of Hancock County, they're doing a tour. They're starting in Greenfield. They're coming through here and they're going to McCordville. They want to see the, they've been part of every one of our projects at the patio, the alley, and the, now the parking lot. And they're gonna be here probably around noon, somewhere around eleven to one in there. We've already talked to Desco. They're, I don't know if you've noticed or not, but they just all of a sudden came down to, to fix the spots that were in the alley, which they've just been pretty wonderful to work with. Anyway, uh, just in case, we're gonna try and put flowers out. We put some boxwoods in the, the, uh, containers already down the alley. We want to put flowers out in the alley and at the patio. I just thought it might be nice if you knew that they were coming, if any of you wanted to be there at the same time. We're gonna be there to greet them as they get off the bus. There's a bus of twenty-five or thirty people coming, so I thought it'd be kind of cool to have that whole tour happening on the, yeah.
I forget anything.
So that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No. Counsel comments. Libby?
Um, I just wanted to say thanks as well for the fence around the, uh, parking lot. It looks really nice. Though now I feel like we have an abundance of parking signs. If somebody can't find that parking lot, hmm, they shouldn't be driving. You have somewhat? Okay, I think it's taller than what I thought it was going to be, but it looks really nice. And I watched a kid get on there, and he was climbing it, and you guys did a great job. It stayed steady in the ground. And then he turned around and shook our tree, and I about went down there and shook him. Strike that. Please. Um, no, but it looks really nice. Thanks for all you guys do.
Are, are we, uh, are we taking care of the old funeral home, Stat Street? Is that us that's doing the landscaping now? I thought that was getting a little rough.
It's probably a little overgrown.
It is today.
Even here at the town hall, they mowed last week, but you fertilize it, and it is out of control.
I drove by today. It was pretty overgrown, yeah. I thought, I didn't know if it was us that were doing it, if we were, yeah.
Me end up needing another mower and more staff just to keep up.
Right, yeah.
I know Heath, uh, we talked with him out there at the park today, and the guys are, uh, hitting it pretty hard, trying to keep up with the grass and. hitting it pretty hard, trying to keep up with the grass, and unfortunately, it's still really wet from all that rain we got, so there was a few places they, you know, kind of got their mowers hung up and marred in a little bit, so. It's a, it's a challenge right now, but hopefully, once we get on a routine, we'll be able to keep it, keep up on it.
I don't have anything else.
I have nothing. Thanks again for this. It does look nice, very nice. I love the black, it always just makes everything look really classic, so.
Yeah, looks good. No comment otherwise. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. No comment. Thank you.
I need a motion to approve a sign vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven oh two. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming.